One, two, three, four.
Hey, it's Mike and John Got It Going On brought to you by Firehouse Doors.
You know, speaking of Firehouse Doors, we here in the Liftmaster 8365 Studios will have a winner in last night's Wednesday night trivia.
That's W N T.
That it is.
For you people in the know.
Yes, it is.
And you know who you are.
Lot of great guesses, too. Recent study finding seventy-five percent or three-quarter of adults have one of these as a kid and still have one today.
Oh, yeah.
Podcast in the basement, not a correct answer.
A hoop used to push with a stick?
All right, let's face it. That has been brought up when you think of old timey times.
Right, right.
Who did that?
Well, we're old, but not that old.
Not that old. Who played kick the can?
Again, that's something I saw in like Little Rascals.
Sure.
You know, that'd be the kind of thing they do in Little Rascals. Kick the can, push the hoop with the stick.
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe.
In the nineteen thirties. I think they were making that up, but that's just me.
Yeah, but then again, I tell my kids things like, I used to play marbles. Go to school with my little marbles and you play and you draw the circle in the dirt and you'd and Mike gets to be like, oh, my God.
Yeah, you're old.
When were you, were there dinosaurs running behind you?
Yeah, I'm old. I never played marbles, but.
Yeah, you lost them all.
Long time ago.
Yeah, well, here you are.
We'll get to our two cent history lesson later on and Rich Pearlberg joining us for the less you know, but before that, we'll start with local news brought to you by Cooper and Binkley Jewelers in downtown Brighton.
All right, here's what's going on. The Howell area Chamber of Commerce has named Howell City Council member Steve Maynor as the Grand Marshal for the 2022 Fantasy of Lights Parade. Maynor's been on Howell City Council since nineteen ninety-nine, serving in a variety of roles, including as mayor pro tem. He came to city government after a long and distinguished career as a public school teacher that began in nineteen sixty-six when he accepted a teaching position in Howell. He then moved up to Highland Way Middle School and then Howell High School. In July, Maynor was honored by the council for his decades of service with a reception and surprise proclamation of appreciation. The 2022 Fantasy of Lights Parade will be held Friday, November twenty-fifth in downtown Howell. Commuters through Livingston County this weekend may have some delays to contend with. The Michigan Department of Transportation is closing two lanes of eastbound I-96 in the Howell area for maintenance. That work, which will start at eight P M. Friday and run through eight A M. Sunday, will require closing two lanes of eastbound I-96 from Mason Road to Chilson Road. Motorists are advised to seek alternate routes. Good luck.
What do you got, Grand River and?
You gotta have fifty-nine, I suppose, you know, if you want to go up that way, but you're screwed.
Good luck with that.
Okay. Clear University student has been bound over for trial on sexual assault charges following a dorm room incident last February on the college's Genoa Township campus. Twenty-year-old Dylan Lewis Sokol of Commerce Township faces two counts of third-degree criminal sexual conduct, force or coercion. Court records show he was bound over to Livingston County Circuit Court following a hearing Monday. According to testimony from Livingston County Sheriff's Detective Jason Davis, the reported assault occurred February seventh in a dorm room on the university's campus. Detective Davis said Sokol and the woman were watching a movie in a dorm room about one-thirty in the morning when she says they kissed. The woman reportedly did not think anything of it, but says when she refused Sokol's request for sex, he then assaulted her. Sokol, through his attorney, has denied the charges. If convicted, he faces up to fifteen years in prison, and that's what's going on.
And news brought to you by Cooper and Binkley Jewelers in downtown Brighton. Brighton's preeminent jewelry store with a commitment to customer service, community involvement, honesty, professionalism, and of course exquisite merchandise. If you're looking for something for the holidays, Mark and Barb Binkley are going shopping. They're heading to the diamond capital of the world.
They are.
And they want to buy a diamond just for you.
Right.
Their custom design.
Leaving on a jet plane. Don't know when they'll be back. Well, actually, they do know, though.
Well, they have a return for it.
Once they do the shopping and get the diamonds.
Let's not ever sing that on this podcast again. But they offer something special for everyone. Recognized customer satisfaction is the sole purpose of their business. So if you're looking for something big, special for the holidays.
Right.
Contact Mark and Barb today. Go to cooperandbinkleyjewellers.com or stop in downtown Brighton on Main Street.
And.
I want you to shop for a diamond for me when you go to the diamond capital of the
And then, you know, and then they'll also probably take your list if you want to, you know, if you have some other things you want them to buy. Could you pick up some chocolate while you're there for me?
Belgian chocolate or Belgian?
I have this list, yeah, Belgian chocolate. Never had Belgian chocolate?
I don't think I have.
I mean, not that I could tell. Chocolate's chocolate.
Ah, it's not at all the same.
Well, I agree.
There's your difference between that waxy.
I was gonna say.
And and the good.
The only kind of chocolate, there's crappy chocolate and good chocolate. That's it. And even the crappy chocolate, I'll eat that.
In a pinch.
Yeah. Not a shock, right?
They also have designs from Simon G. and Zagani. That's not chocolate, that's jewelry.
That's true.
Cooper and Binkley Jewelers on Main Street in downtown Brighton.
Right.
Let's see, last night in our Wednesday night trivia question, recent study found three-quarters of adults had one of these.
That's seventy-five percent.
It is. It's much like we scored on most of our tests and that's why we're in a basement doing a podcast.
You got seventy-five percent. Wow.
I was a good student.
Good for you.
Yeah, C, C-plus. Had one of these as a kid and still have one today. Want to know what it is?
Some of the answers were interesting.
A lot of blankies or blankets.
Or favorite pillows.
Yeah.
Our friend Mona pointed out, favorite pillow.
There's a lot of that. Dawn said a fear of something. I could see, you know, usually there's those fears you have as a kid, whether it's swimming or clowns.
Right.
Speaking in public. Those kind of things usually don't go away.
Sitting in a basement.
Yeah.
Oh.
Favorite sports team.
Yeah.
You have your homers. Like, you know, I'm a Lions fan, you know, you're, you know what you're in for.
Right.
Wings, Red Wings, Pistons, those kind of things, you have your favorite.
I gave up the Lions early. At age nine, I'm like, no, I'm done. And I went to the Dolphins, who haven't been great either, but certainly not the Lions.
Yeah, tell us your favorite player today on the Dolphins, John.
The one that plays quarterback.
That's the one.
That guy. You know, the guy.
Takes the hike.
Cool uniform, okay?
Sure. It was very orange and.
You're right, if you ask, who's last? Marino.
Yeah, Dan Marino, thirty years ago.
Ah, I don't know.
Dennis said a dollar. I had a dollar when I was a kid. I still have one today.
Still working on it. Alicia says a cassette player.
Yeah, you know what?
Do you have a cassette player? I don't. I got rid of mine. I had a cassette player till about a year ago, about a year ago.
I don't know if it works anymore.
And I, yeah, my family said this has to.
That is a great guess, though. An imaginary friend.
Right.
I just talk to myself.
God, he's such a jerk, isn't he? I know all the time.
Every day. Suzanne says a job. Well, you may have had a job as a.
Well, sure.
As a kid, as a paper boy and, well, here we are in a basement again. A pet or a pet peeve.
Right.
Those are great guesses, too.
Very specific answer from Diane, etch a sketch. So Diane apparently still has an etch a sketch.
Yeah. A yo-yo says, Lisa. You know, yo-yos were a thing back in the seventies and I'm sure they were, you know, earlier on before then.
Right.
You know, when you're playing with your stick and your hoop. But Duncan kind of made that thing. They had quite a run with the butterfly yo-yo and all the different styles.
Did you mention pet?
Yeah, pet or pet peeve, too. A lot of people said pet. A birthmark, yeah, you really can't get rid of those, can you?
Well, no.
I suppose you could have them surgically removed. We're not going to read Brandon's answer, but thank you for chiming in.
I gotta see Brandon's answer.
Tim said a Bible.
That wasn't Brandon's answer?
No, that was, Brandon's was a little further away on that one.
Okay, then. It usually is.
A favorite song. I was at the gym this morning and I heard Fox on the Run by Sweet. And I was like, yeah, in sixth grade, that was a favorite song.
I'm leaving on a jet plane.
No. But our winner. Wait, I'm still looking for Brandon's answer. It's something you get as a teenager.
Oh. Is it involve a?
It has to do with.
Something happens at night while you're sleeping? Oh, oh, I didn't know.
It has to do with hair. Not on your head or your face.
Oh, there I got it. Got it.
So, yeah, thanks, Brandon.
Hey, Curly?
Clarence Thomas will tell you all about it. All right, and finally, our winner, Sue Benton.
Yes, congratulations, Sue.
Sue Benton, the answer was a piggy bank or some form of piggy bank.
Now.
We almost have one here.
Well, that's true.
Not a swear jar, but it's.
Now, I'm gonna say the word, but I'm saying it in context.
No, no, you say it, you pay.
No, no.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
I'm calling an exception. This, because people have to explain what it is. Okay, what is this? You explain it then.
It's, it's like our swear jar for when John says the word indeed.
Okay.
Because he found that as a.
It's a crutch. It's a verbal crutch.
Indeed.
Right.
Indubitably.
You will say, and that's just one of those verbal things you throw out there and then you kind of notice and you're like, ah, I say that a lot. Yeah. So, so not gonna say that word.
Sue is going in the drawing courtesy of Firehouse Doors.
Okay.
For that Liftmaster eighty-three sixty-five garage door opener with two remotes.
And keyless entry pad.
Now, if you don't have two cars, you can just carry one around on your belt.
Sure.
Whatever you want or in this purse.
Look important.
Whatever, whatever works.
It's my garage door.
And the keyless entry pad.
Yeah.
Install and they'll take away the old one.
Right. By Firehouse Doors, who, by the way, have been serving Livingston County residents for the past twenty-four years.
They've also been sponsoring this program since it started.
It's at least not twenty-four years.
Not, but close.
A family-owned business, they strive to treat each customer like family. Veteran-owned, Mike Witt, a proud U.S. Air Force veteran. Firehouse Doors is your one-stop shop for residential, commercial, and rolling steel overhead door needs and for the past twenty-one years, verging on twenty-two, Firehouse Doors has been Livingston County's only authorized distributor for C H I overhead doors, the top name in overhead doors. Call Firehouse Doors today, eight-ten-five-nine-nine-seventy-four-eighty.
I was looking at another one, another one of these answers. Somebody said like a favorite toy or a teddy bear.
Yeah.
Like a stuffed animal.
I have a chicken.
You still have the chicken, don't you?
I do. You want me to go get Cluck?
No, I think Cluck Cluck should be.
Yeah.
No. What is your attachment to?
You leave Cluck Cluck alone.
What is, what is the attachment?
Well, he's sitting, he's in a Ziploc bag in a cabinet somewhere.
Oh, suffocate. I see.
I, I don't know why, when I was a little kid, for whatever reason, I ended up with a stuffed chicken. I don't know if I saw it and wanted it, if my parents bought it for me, if some aunt or whatever gave it to me, I have no idea.
Wasn't a gift from an old girlfriend?
Here you go, chicken. Who you calling chicken?
You call me chicken?
Call chicken. Okay.
Wasn't that in?
It was a Back to the Future.
Back to the Future.
Two. Oh, no, it was in all of them. Yeah, yeah.
Chicken.
Who you calling chicken?
Biff.
All right.
Hey, Biff. That was Biff calling George a chicken.
People named Biff.
All right, Rich Pearlberg joining us for the.
Is he called Biff? Should we call him Biff?
I don't know. You know, one of the answers was nickname. I wonder if old Pearlberg had a nickname.
We'll find out.
The Pearl.
Yeah.
Rich, the Pearl, Pearlberg.
Yeah.
Good morning, Mike and John.
Good morning, Rich. Hey, before we get into the less you know today, in our trivia question, three-quarters of people had one of these as a kid and now having it as an adult, the correct answer was a piggy bank, but one of the other answers.
I thought it was an superiority complex.
Well, yeah.
One of the other answers that that was pretty good and common was a nickname. And we were wondering if you, if you had a nickname.
Yeah, do you have a nickname growing up?
You know, the pearl?
Mine was J.J.
I, I had one that I've kept it a secret and I'm not about to reveal it now, but when I was starting to play sports in high school, I was called Flash.
Flash.
Now, was that said ironically?
Most definitely. Of course it is. Oh, let's do the whisperer's here.
Right. Hey, Flash.
Yeah, that was very ironic. I was short, but I was slow.
Well, you had that. You had that going for you.
That could fit in a few arenas.
It's because I'm short.
He's short and slow. Okay, Flash.
See, the scouting report.
I don't know if Flash would, you know, they're kind of contradictory.
Right.
I mean, I was, I had a tough sports life. I was the motivator for the coaches used to the other guys when they were running sports. See, basketball. Gosh, even Pearlberg beat you.
Oh, see now, now, you know, you could get that coach or teacher in trouble, you know? He made fun of me.
Well, he did. He was, he obviously just made me feel bad. He was my history teacher.
My wrestling coach was also my history teacher and I'm not, I don't, I don't want to cast dispersions on wrestling coaches and their knowledge of American history, but.
Wait a minute, you were a wrestling, you wrestled?
No, no, no. I'm saying the, the, the school's wrestling coach was our history teacher and I don't want to say that I knew more than he did, but I knew more than he did.
But you just did.
Yeah.
No, I had, I had an interesting, my basketball coach is also our math teacher of a higher level math class, and he was pretty good. And his name was Kid Carson, which was kind of a.
Wow.
Wow.
Sounds like a fighter.
Yeah.
In this corner.
Most of our coaches were history teachers for some reason, but this guy taught, we had a football coach who taught art and we had a basketball coach who taught, taught math.
Yeah, I learned pretty quickly in that history course, when he would say something wrong and he often would, and I'd be like, um, actually.
Oh, you were the cliff dream of history class.
It didn't take long, except I was right. It didn't take long for me to realize I should probably just shut up.
Yeah, that might make you very, you probably appreciated it a lot.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Cooper and John, he corrects me a lot.
Oh, yeah. You know how that is.
I should thank him someday.
Yeah, which kind of ties into what we're going to talk about today in a, in a loose way.
Wow, yeah.
Talking about, you know, these school board races going on, you know, across the country, but, but specifically in Livingston County, some very heated up school board races.
Contentious stuff going on here.
That normally these don't draw much attention at all.
Normally they don't draw much attention? Yeah, that's an understatement. And now you got, you got signs from one end of the county to the other of above all school board candidates. And I had, years ago, a guy told me that the school board, the, the school board seats were generally filled by the, by the moms who led the pizza sales for the PTA. That was a little bit derogatory, but, but yeah, it's become, I mean, to the point, not only are they contentious, but you've got slates running and the one, the one, almost in every district, there's a, there's a slate that's not only pushed by the Moms for Liberty, but also the local Republican Party has endorsed them.
Well, if you go, if you go back about a year, I, I believe the Livingston County Republican Party started posting notices about having trainings for folks that they wanted to run for school board. And so this is, it's not just incidental, this was a, this is a process to basically, I think politicize what are ostensibly supposed to be nonpartisan races.
Yeah, you know, the people get caught up in a nonpartisan, that doesn't mean you can't have political thoughts, but it's not supposed to be driven by, by political dogma. You know, the idea is how can we best have a publicly funded school district for our children?
That's so quaint.
I know, I know. I feel like I'm at another time, but it, it, yeah, it's, it's.
With a stick of rage.
It's so involved and I, and I, I don't know the particulars in all five of the major school districts, but it seems to me that a lot of positions are open where if, if this same Moms for Liberty slate was successful, they could pretty much take over the boards. They're gonna have three or four members.
It just seems like, you know, it's, it's gotten way beyond what's best for the kids to learn in school these days. It's just taken a whole, everything seems to have taken a political spin and you just wonder, can we just, you know, not go that way for once here and there?
Well, there was, there was a columnist who was writing a piece about it and he goes, this has become the point where school boards are going to be jumping off positions for political careers.
Right.
You run for school board and then you go to a higher office and I don't know when that has ever happened before.
You know, my experience has been, I've known several school board members in different districts through the years who've done, it is one of, it has been, and I hope it remains in a certain sense, it's one of the hardest jobs out there to do a school board position right. People think you just, oh, I just show up at a meeting and I vote yes or no, this is good, that is bad. And it's like, no, there's a lot of homework involved in being on a school board.
That's why I don't get involved in it.
I mean, there should be at least, and I, I, you know, would, my assumption is that for a lot of these folks who are suddenly very interested in being on school boards because they have one or two particular issues that they are very hyper focused on, that I think there's a sense of like, I'll just show up at the board meeting and I'll just say yes or no. And they're, they're not necessarily going to be involved in like doing the homework in terms of like budgeting, curriculum, policy. There's a lot that goes into this, that should go into it.
There's a lot to be knowledgeable about it, but I think, I think a lot of folks used to say that a school board's job was, was from thirty thousand feet. You, you looked over, you hired professionals. I mean, you don't do the budgeting yourself. You generally have a, a, a business manager who knows the details, but you ask them questions and you, and you direct them and say, this is where we're gonna go. I, I think some of them are gonna find that in some areas, you're limited on what you can do.
Right.
You've got a contract in place, that pretty much sets your budget. That's seventy, seventy-five percent of your budget. But where things can get hairy really fast, it's, they hire the superintendent. If the superintendent pushes back at all, that, that, that person could be gone and that can be an expensive proposition. For one thing, most superintendents have what they call three-year annually rollover contracts. So even if you want to fire them, it takes two or three years.
Well, we certainly saw a lot of that over the past fifteen years.
What are you, what are you talking about?
Howell almost had, they almost had a wheel of superintendents spinning. Who is it this year?
Yeah, they just came and went all the time and, and that was before you had all these other issues at the place.
Right.
But to turn it into a CRT and an anti-grooming campaign, which, which I think is what this is about.
Oh, a lot of it is, right.
They say indoctrination, not education.
Well, and again. And of course, they're, they're just outright falsehoods. I mean, a, a lot of what's being pushed that, you know, students are being indoctrinated or they're, you know, it's just, it's simply untrue and it doesn't matter how much you can point out that it's untrue. They just wish to believe it to be true, therefore it is true. But you hit upon something really interesting, Rich, before that I think is worth noting, the notion of. Yeah, I know, write this down. Of, you know, they're limited in a lot of what you can do and especially I've seen some of these candidates who have talked about, we're gonna get rid of federal funding for our schools. And you're like, really? You know, first of all, they don't even understand how schools are funded and.
Well, yeah, it feels like Livingston County get very little federal funding. Most of that goes to, you know, low-income schools and things like that.
Right, but there is federal funding that is tied to, to.
And that comes with some strings, as they say.
Well, there's like the, there's the S R funding. I mean, those are federal funds that come through that schools absolutely depend on. And of course, most schools are funded by local property taxes and, and so in, in the school formula, per, per student, you know, formula that comes through the state budget. So, absolutely, but federal funds are, are a part of that, they're tied into that. And again, it just shows, I guess, a complete lack of understanding about how school funding is, is achieved and what the limitations of what you can do. Also, the notion that you're just gonna come in and we're gonna, we're gonna rewrite the curriculum, you know?
Why am we not gonna happen?
But, but, but you bring up a good point, though. I can, I can see this happening. I mean, at, at the county level, they, you've got a, you've got a group that probably has the same mentality towards government, was actually turned down federal funding.
Right.
So it's not impossible to see a majority in the school board doing the same thing to show their independence.
Well, this brings to, mind though, what is the?
I'd be nervous if I was a superintendent or a teacher. I'd be very nervous.
Well, I'd be more nervous if I was a teacher, because teachers don't have rolling three-year contracts that will pay them six, six-figure pluses.
Uh, some protection.
Sure. Of course they do. Of course they do, and as they should.
You can't just walk in and you can make life miserable for them.
Well, and, and they already are. They, they already are making it miserable.
They have a hard enough time keeping teachers, you know, ever since COVID has happened too, you know, just getting teachers.
There's been, there's been a lot of early, I think.
A lot of early retirements.
Early retirements, not as many people going into it, but.
So make it harder for them to do their job.
They're talking about, it's ironic, they're talking about indoctrination and up till a few years ago, the whole thing was, well, our kids aren't learning any time. So now all of a sudden they've become, well, this is for all this indoctrination.
Well, exactly. It's like parental rights when it comes to things like, you know, masks, you know, oh, Uh, you know, oh, you can't make my kid wear a mask or you can't make my kid, you know, do contact tracing. You know, that's where this whole parental rights thing came in and now it's like, uh, well, only for parents that rights for only parents we approve of and only for things that we think are proper.
Yeah, it's parental rights if you, if you agree with us, but here's the thing, and, and I probably make it too simplistic, but that's my job here. Uh, how about if, I, 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 I agree with you, this stuff about indoctrination is, is foolish. But here's, here's a suggestion. When your kid comes home from school, talk to them. And, and if you don't like what they're being taught, uh, have a discussion with them. I just, I just don't understand why there's all this fear of, uh, of your kids being, uh,
Well.
loaded with false information. And who was it? It was, was it Dixon who was just asked? She was talking about all the horrible things going on at the schools? And, uh, and the reporter, jerk that he was, said, can you give us some examples? Of course she couldn't.
Well, not only that, the reporter from Michigan Advance said, can you cite some examples of pornography in K through 12 education? And Dixon tried to define it to her. She mom-splained pornography to her. Well, you see, it's when two naked people engage. And I'm like, what is happening here?
Bible, by the way.
And then, and then she offered to send her porn. You know, I can send you some if you want. And you're like, did a gubernatorial candidate just offer to send pornography to a reporter? I'm like, what is going on?
Yeah, I'm thinking I may have to go to her website.
Well, is it, is it good?
Yeah. That's just cinematic stuff. That's nothing. Amateur.
All right, I think we've taken this off the rails again.
It's what we do.
But, uh.
You know, I, I would just, before we, I would just say this. My, my question is this, for a lot of these folks that wanna come in quote unquote, reform education through the school board process, is I question their commitment to public education to begin with. I think that there is an underlying agenda here to starve public education of funding and to gut it. And, uh, all we have to do is look towards Betsy DeVos and what she wants to do. And so I just think you have to, you have to go in and question, you cannot just say, I'm gonna vote for this person because they seem nice. Well, they seem nice. Oh, here's a picture of them with their kids. She seems nice, he seems nice. What's their agenda? All right? And the agenda, I think for, and in my opinion.
Again, you're asking people to do homework, John.
Well, yeah, this is not the show for that.
No.
But there's, you know, and there's.
There's me again.
Get me out of political stuff. There are challenges for education. How do you, you know, uh, there, there's a guy who writes, uh, uh, he's very critical of public education, not for the reasons these folks are. He points out that, uh, uh, and I don't know if this is true or not, but it's a statistic, so let's go with it, uh, that of, of all the people who took foreign languages in school, only one percent can speak them reasonably well. So his, his argument is nobody's learned anything in school anyway. If you come from a, a good supportive home where, where there's, you, you're probably doing well. If you come from a home where there's all sorts of difficulties, you don't do as well. Do schools really add much? And I, I think, I think there's probably few that have bigger challenges in a school district trying to, trying to be all things to all people. But there are legitimate ways you can try to reform and help school districts do their jobs better. This doesn't add.
All right, I think we'll leave it at that. Flash? Flash has spoken.
Well, okay, short and slow.
All right. S and S, we'll talk to you again next week.
Just don't call me S and S.
All right, Rich, thanks. All right, the last you know with Rich Pearlberg here on Thursday.
And a day we fulfilled that.
Here, I'll put a battery in as well.
Hold on, hold on, no wait, hold on, hold on. Take the battery out. You know what?
We might need that. This is kind of a cheap one. It's a no-name battery. It's not an Ever, Evermaster, Ever Ready. Oh, look at that dollar.
It's a buck.
Look at that.
All right.
I know you're short about five, but, all right.
I've got, I've got more, cause you know.
You got more?
I could say it again.
Richter, Richter and Associates Property Management, uh, one of our sponsors, we appreciate him, licensed real estate brokers, rental property experts here in Livingston County, also Genesee in Oakland Counties too, forty years plus experience in the property management business. They're located in downtown Howell. Wanna talk to them today, five one seven, five four zero, ninety-five sixty, or check out their website, richerassosch.com. They've got a property available in Fallerville coming soon.
Right.
On Sycamore River Drive.
And that website, richerassosch.com, that's R I C H T E R A S S O C dot com. Say it with me, R I C H T E R A S S O C dot com.
I lip synced it. How's that?
You did very good.
I didn't wanna interrupt you.
Well, that's good. Why start now?
Our two cent history lesson, um, today is biscotti day, by the way. When's the last time you had a biscotti?
I don't like biscotti.
I don't either.
It's a stale muffin or whatever the hell it is.
Yeah, it is.
It's like.
It's a stick, isn't it?
Oh, this is so good. I'm like, okay.
Nah, it's biscotti. You just like saying biscotti. That, that's all.
It's Italian.
It's a biscotti.
Hey.
Or.
Well, here we are, adulting him, the worst stereotype.
Is it a biscotti? No, it's a biscotti and it.
Well, you know, hey, to each their own, okay?
Well, I guess if you get one that's covered with chocolate, that wouldn't be too bad, but people like to dip it in their tea.
Well, that's what you're supposed to, I guess, and I'm.
But it is basically a stale piece of bread.
Crunchy, I, I, I don't know.
You gotta soften it up somehow.
It's a biscotti, also known as Kentucci.
Oh, Scott, biscotti, Kentucci? I know that guy.
It comes from the Tuscan city of Prado. Twice baked, oblong shaped, dry crunchy. Boy, just, mm.
Oozes flavor.
Oh, yeah. Twice baked, oblong shaped and dry and crunchy. Yeah, give me a bunch of those.
Well, it is National Biscotti Day, so you can have two.
Or don't forget, it's also a Kentucci.
Okay. It's like Caravelli's buddy. Uh, National VFW Day and World Heart Day. We look at the cardiovascular system.
Have a heart. I mean, yeah.
Our two cent history lesson, by the way.
Go take somebody else's heart.
Brought to you by.
Unless they're a donor.
Oakland Insurance.
Oh, sorry. Drew Goble. At Oakland Insurance and Michigan based.
Drew likes a good biscotti.
Frank Muth Insurance. Oh, yeah, he does. Yeah, he promises some alcohol infused eclairs at one point. We never got any.
Maybe you went to the wrong address.
So, anyway, call Drew Goble at Oakland Insurance or Michigan based Frank Muth Insurance, providing peace of mind. They believe the best relationships are honest, upfront and fair. Call Drew Goble at Oakland Insurance, two four eight, six four seven, twenty-five hundred.
Hold on, I gotta get this biscotti off my screen. It won't go away. The biscotti won't leave. All right. It was on this day in seventeen eighty-nine.
Oh, my pen wasn't working. Sorry.
Are you hearing that in your headphones? Just asking. Seventeen eighty-nine, the US War Department established a regular army of several hundred men. Several hundred.
Well, it was early, you know.
Seventeen eighty-nine. It's on this day in nineteen sixty-seven. The governor of Tennessee declared it Elvis Presley Day, nineteen sixty-seven.
I don't know.
Seven people in Chicago area died on this day in nineteen eighty-two after unwittingly taking extra strength Tylenol. And this led to the safety cap.
Right.
Did it or did it not?
It did. The whole safety seal, yeah. Cause it had been poisoned.
Anti-tampering.
Right.
Seal.
Which sometimes they don't make any sense.
Now it can get to the point where it's just frustrating. It's like, I got a headache and now my headache's worse cause I gotta take off this plastic seal.
Right.
Then I gotta screw the top a certain way.
Trying to tear at it with like a, like a jackal and a.
Now my blood pressure's up because I got a headache, cause I can't open the damn Tylenol bottle. All right. But it was for, it was a good thing.
Right, yep.
Kinda like it better when they have the aluminum foil on the top.
Right, some are.
Some of them, it's like.
Some are super easy.
How long has this been on here for?
And you can tell, like, the, the manufacturer actually spent some money to make this as easy as possible. It's a safety seal and I can just peel it right off. One piece, done. Others, no.
Instead I gotta get a little.
There's a little pieces left.
Or they have that little tab on the side, which they do with peanut butter tops. That you're trying to peel it off and then you have half of it off.
Right! And that you're like, you couldn't make this tab just a little bit bigger?
No.
No. So then you pull it off and half of it rips off, then you gotta take the other half off. Life is hard. It's so hard.
First world problems.
All right.
While traveling on his motorbike in nineteen eighty-nine from Los Angeles, Bruce Springsteen stopped by Matt's Saloon in Prescott, Arizona.
Well, who wouldn't?
The boss pulls up on a hog, not to be confused with boss hog.
Or the hog pulls up on a boss.
Jammed with the house band for an hour. Can you imagine that?
How cool is that?
Springsteen shows up. He overheard a woman at the bar at Matt's Saloon talking about her financial problems concerning medical bills. A week later, the woman received a check from the boss for a hundred thousand dollars.
What? And at that point, people just started showing up at the bar. Um, yes, my tax bill is outrageous.
Oh, oh, Bruce isn't here?
Oh, never mind.
I'll have another beer. Nineteen ninety, Millie's Book by First Lady Barbara Bush, featuring her dog.
Millie.
Right, cause it was Millie's book.
Put that together.
Yeah. It was the best-selling nonfiction book in the US.
See, so, yeah, uh.
Millie's Book.
So Barbara Bush, uh, and this is, uh.
Nineteen ninety.
Right, so the original First Lady Bush, you know, not the original name, same, First Mrs. Bush.
The First Mrs. Bush.
First Lady.
Not to be confused with the second First Lady.
Which was Laura Bush.
Laura Bush.
Right. So Barbara Bush.
Right.
Anyway, she wrote the first, cause I don't think there was a dog book or a pet book by a presidential administration prior to that. I think Millie was the first one. Cause then, we talked about last week, I think the Sox, Sox the Cat.
Yeah.
Came out later that was written by Hillary Clinton. Right, you know.
Written by Hillary.
Anyway, um. So.
Think she had a little help on that? Just ask. Nineteen ninety-four, the US House voted to end the practice of lobbyists buying meals and entertainment for members of Congress.
Well, that fixed it.
No more strip clubs and big ass steaks.
Right. But I'm a congressman. But if I drop this dollar bill in front of you, I'm not giving it to you. I just happened to, oops.
Did that fall out of my?
How did that hundred fall right there?
Did that fall out of my tip cup?
You know, if I just happen to be eating lunch and you're at the same table as me and I ordered two meals for me, but I'm not as hungry as I thought I was.
Well, it's like splitting the meal.
Well, yeah. That's right. I didn't buy it for you. I bought it for me.
See, problem solved.
Yes, exactly.
It was on this day in two thousand two. Twenty years ago today, Kelly Clarkson, who won American Idol, started a two-week run at number one with the hit single Moment Like This.
Okay.
Now she's had, she has a talk show, she's selling stuff for, what is it, Wayfair, Mayfair?
Right.
Something like that.
Meanwhile, let's go back to Justin, the guy she beat. Remember him?
What happened to Justin?
Yeah, I don't know. Panhandling somewhere.
Welcome to Walmart.
He's at Sailor's Bar in Arizona. So anyway, my tax bill.
Salute. He might have run into the.
That's what I'm saying. So, uh, yeah, if the boss is here.
He's, you know what, you know what Justin's doing? If it weren't for that Kelly, I'd have been something.
All right, we gotta find out.
Justin, I don't.
Was it Guarani or something like that?
I don't remember.
Yeah.
Finally, it was on this day in two thousand four. Keith Moon's five-piece drum kit, custom made for the Who's drummer in nineteen sixty-eight, sold for two hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars in London to an American collector. Set the world record for a set of drums, price paid. Now I was thinking about this.
Uh-oh.
Obviously Keith needs more money, cause the Who is on their ninth, tenth, twelfth farewell tour.
Keith's dead.
Well, he's not on, on the tour with them, but his memory is.
Right.
You always gotta be, now I know how your history teacher felt, okay? Now I know how your history.
Let's go to Keith Moon and his memory on the drums, just silence.
But I was thinking, if I was, if I was into rock memorabilia and I wanted a drum set, would it have been Keith Moon from the Who's that I would want? Probably not.
I, I don't know, why not?
No, if you had your choice of rock drummers, you, you'd go Neil.
Neil, yeah, I'd go Neil. Yeah. Number one, you're gonna get more drum for your buck because that thing is like eight hundred pieces of drum.
We wouldn't have room in the.
You know, no, this, yeah, no. But, uh, but as far as famous drummers, I mean, the thing about Keith Moon, and I think it was the same thing with John Bonham, they had this completely offbeat way of drumming.
Yeah.
I mean, Keith Moon looked like he was having some sort of seizure when he was out there drumming, but somehow it worked. But, uh.
That's, so you, so you'd go for Neil?
I'd go for Neil. Oh, I, I, no. I mean, if I had my choice, I'd take Ringos.
Take Ringo.
I'd take Ringos. I'd take the original nineteen sixty-four Beatles. Yeah, just the little, oh, yeah, that's the one.
See, I would, I would be right along the same lines with it. Probably Mickey's from the Monkees.
Okay.
That's cool, I'll go on it. All right. And, and he's the only remaining monkey left. So I would want his drum set. So if anybody's out there shopping for Christmas presents.
Don't take his drum set away. It's all he's got.
Well, I'm sure.
Give me your drums.
Here's Mickey. Now he just tours and has somebody else play the drums.
Well, yeah.
But the ones from the show?
No.
Yeah, that's the one I want.
Okay, fair enough. Or what about the Mosquitos? Bingo, bango, bongo and.
Irving.
Irving, right?
From Gilligan's Island. Why do I know this crap?
Well, who knows? By the way, Justin Guarani, who was the runner-up to Kelly Clarkson.
What's he doing now?
He's a Broadway actor. He's actually, he's had a decent career, so good for him.
What, you know, did they bill it as? And Justin from American?
You have to wonder, right, if that, uh.
All right, that's your two cent history lesson, brought to you by our friends at Oakland Insurance, Drew Goble and Company. Call today, two four eight, six four seven, twenty-five hundred.
All right. Thanks, Drew.
That's right.
All right. Wanna remind you again, uh, about the fundraiser this weekend for Lieutenant Steve Moore, uh, raising money for him. Uh, Steve is in hospice with pancreatic cancer, uh, so raising money to try and help out his family. And of course, that's going on at the Howl Elks Club this weekend. There's a silent auction going on there from four till ten. Uh, also, a GoFundMe, uh, has been set up and you'll find all that on our Facebook page, um, at, uh, Mike and John Got It Going On on Facebook.
Well, actually, and then, oh, it's just on a Facebook page?
It's on Facebook, yeah.
All right, it's on.
We made it easy for you. So, so go there and, and help out Steve and his family.
All right. Wanna thank Murphy's Family Auto for, uh, being a sponsor here on Mike and John Got It Going On. You've got car troubles, Murphy's Family Auto, the ones to call, five one seven, five five two, thirty, forty. Or you can stop by, even on Saturdays between eight and one. They're open on Saturday for your convenience. Tell them Mike and John sent you. You'll save five percent on your bill. Murphy's Family Auto, your car know-ist and online, murphy'sfamilyauto.com. Hey, you know, tomorrow's Friday. The great Bonnie Run.
So this is Friday Eve.
Sure.
Talk to Rhonda at Torch One Eighty?
We will.
Catch up. They've got their big Glow Five K Run going on Saturday night.
Mount Brighton. We'll talk a little more about that in case you're, you're looking for something to do for fun. That'll be a blast. It's all coming up tomorrow. Mike and John Got It Going On.
All right, we're post-show.
Yeah, we are. So you ever check out something that comes on your Facebook feed?
Right.
And the next thing you know, you're always getting things related to that.
Right.
I was looking at this, this thing about muscle cars.
Okay.
And then I, I keep getting these things on my feed from, uh, Motor Junkie. And they'll say like, the worst cars of the eighties, or the best muscle cars that never made it, or concept cars. Well, the other day they had, um, eighties car features that we no longer see. And some of them, I was like, I completely forgot about.
All right.
Remember some of the cars that would have buttons in the seats, like it was a fancy cushion? And there'd be an indentation where you'd have these buttons. I forget what they get, tufts, I think they were called. Don't remember that? Velour seating?
Wasn't one on my Pinto, so I don't remember.
That, the Pinto, by the way, was in some of the worst cars ever.
Well, yeah, of course. No, uh, so wait, you would push the button?
No, no, that was just a decorative button.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, I was like, a push button.
Like a cushion.
Got it.
Like when you have a cushion on like a rocking.
Got it, right.
And it has those buttons in it. Those used to be.
Right.
On car seats.
And all this would do is be a crumb collector.
Pretty much. It was a great collector.
Right. Well, my car was crumb, but anyway, go on.
Wooden paneling.
Oh, God. You think of the family truckster.
The family truckster comes to mind, yeah. Uh, automatic seat belts, I completely forgot about that. Remember the one that would go along the, the top of your?
The very first car that I bought on my own, brand new, was a Ford Escort.
Cut those.
Yeah, and, uh.
Yeah, that had the seat belt.
Automatic seatbelt across the chest. You know. And if you weren't in position, if you were like getting, and you got in and let's say you're leaning over against something and you're like, ah, I'm like, okay, oh my God.
Uh, well, I know you had a CB radio as a kid.
I did.
Did you have one in the car?
Uh, in my family's vehicle, yeah.
Tea tops, which were supposed to be.
My, uh, my colony was Meatball.
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
Dead bore, good buddy, Meatball.
Kinda spurred on by the smoking abandoned craze.
Sure.
Um, tea tops were, were pretty popular.
Of course.
Um, although not safe.
Well, nothing to do with it.
It was about being cool in your Trans Am.
Yeah.
Um, vinyl roofs. My first car had like a partial vinyl roof.
Yeah, I.
You think about it and you just don't see that anymore.
Right, which is completely unsafe.
Well, it was like the outside, it was steel, but covered in the vinyl, like half of it would be vinyl. And you look at it and then the vinyl gets a crack, it starts peeling and the next thing you know, you got a rusty.
Torino. Um, let's see, what else did I, I notice?
Bench seats. You don't see a lot of those anymore, like front seats or bench seats.